Well, thank you for watching tonight's broadcast. Tonight, we're going to interview Carl Ryan. He is a candidate for the City Commission in the city of Salina, and he's here in the studio. How are you, Carl?
Dr. Moore. Glad to see you.
Pleased to meet you. So Carl, tell me and the viewers a little bit about yourself and your background, where you're from, and what you do here in Salina.
Well, I'm from Salina. I've lived here all my life. My family goes back three generations, and there's a couple generations under me, so we can claim about six generations in Salina. My family has a business here that I'm a part of, and we're in our fourth generation with that business. It's located about a half a block from here, and we've been in the downtown area about 98 years. So always been really proud to be a Salina, and I grew up living in the downtown part of the city. And just really glad that I'd have the opportunity to come back and work with my family here for the last 40 years.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you did leave the city.
Well, I went off to college, and I worked a few years in our profession in the Kansas City area, but then my family asked me back. And it was, I was a product of the 60s, you know, peace and love, and I didn't know if I really wanted to be in the funeral procession profession at that time. But after being in an electrical engineering program for two or three years, I decided that I was much more of a people kind of person. And so I got into the business on my own and just decided I would go out in the corporate world with the funeral procession profession. We don't drive everywhere. And then my parents gave me the opportunity to come back. I was probably one of those kind of scofflaw kids when I was growing up, so I welcomed the opportunity to get closer to them and work with them. And my two older brothers were in the business as well. So I got to sort of reunite with my family.
So this is a family business that you're involved with?
It is, yeah.
Okay. And tell me, why have you filed as a candidate for the seat on the City Commission?
Well, the first time that I ran, I felt interested in seeing the downtown be revitalized. Of course, I just said my family's business is down there. I grew up in the downtown area with YMCA there and the public library, and the schools were there, the Cozy Inn, the barber shops. And it seemed to me in the 70s, we kind of moved away from the downtown concept. Everybody was supporting the growth around the new interchanges of the highways that were going up. And it just seemed like the right time for a push to revitalize the downtown. And I was also been always interested in the River Initiative. Goals for Salina took place in the early 90s. The top goal that came out of that community referendum was to revitalize the river. So being interested in that and some of the development issues in town, I decided that I would get involved and had people that I respected ask me to get involved. And so then I wound up in the election. This time around, I'm of course interested and see some of the initiatives that we've begun come around, but now I realize that it's more about growth. Salina needs to grow, and to do that, to attract millennials and centenials here, we've got to have the kind of connectivity, the kind of associations that my generation grew up with and the older people generation ahead of me. We had our fraternals and our social organizations, our churches, and a lot of that community conversation and that association that created that culture happened in those forums. And now we need to provide those same things for the newer generation. So if we're gonna, we've seen a decline in population across north and western Kansas, the service area that Salina has. And until maybe the last few years, we haven't seen any decline here, but we're starting to see a little bit of that. So I think Salina's got to be the kind of city that offers the right amenity, the right vibrancy is a word in our mission statement, but it's got to offer the kind of cultural attractions that the younger people want to have. So that's where my focus will be in the coming term if the voters want to have me back.
So you're proud of what's happening in the downtown area, then?
Oh, yes. I'm very proud of that and very proud of the people that got involved. Couldn't have happened without the collaboration of a large number of people. I think Salina is a city that's a lot more than just the sum of its parts because everybody, maybe it's a factor of the town being 50,000, and you can get to know 50,000 people in a lifetime. Maybe it's a factor of the associations that people have within their churches. But we've always been a collaborative city, and it's important that we retain that. And a number of important individuals in the city stepped up to help make that happen down there.
Okay. Well, you know that Salina has had some recent budget challenges. And I would just want to know, how are you going to address this issue? What would you cut and what would you keep?
Well, I think as a commission, of course, I'm just one commissioner, and I happen to be one running for office. We have had a number of things put on the table that we didn't expect to have there. And then we have a lot of good ideas that were before us, before we found out we had a budget shortfall. So as a commission, I don't think we really want to say no to anything. I think the group does want to take up almost everything that we see before us. But like any budget situation, you've got to pick and choose what you're able to do. And it was unfortunate that some of our forecasting was short, and it's unfortunate that some of the sales revenues are down. I think those two items, the ag economy has been very poor for the region, and I think that has a bigger impact on the sales tax revenues that we anticipated. So to fix it, you know, that's really, I'm the kind of guy that likes to get all the parts on the table in front of him, but I rely on staff to give me the information that I need and to give me choices. And we have a new city manager, and he's been challenged to, you know, put himself in front of his organization and, you know, build their confidence, build it in his image, and go through his first budget process. So he's been exacting about finding out the information he thinks that he needs to feel confident in where the budget will progress. I think that the staff has presented us a pretty workable situation for this next budget year, and hopefully we'll see where the forecasting takes us.
So it sounds, Carl, as though you're the type of person that likes to see the city build up and people within the city build up rather than to tax down. Is that a fair assessment?
Well, I don't look at the spending that we do as spending, I look at it as an investment. And I think that we need to invest in infrastructure at all times. But we have to be realistic about who we are. We're a town of 50,000, so we have to keep our traditions and our sense of size in place. We also need to keep all of our, you know, best practices, get all the best information we can, because we're in a position both geographically and size-wise and budget-wise that we need to pick and choose carefully. We can't overextend ourselves. It just wouldn't be wise to do that. And then I think the fourth piece of that is, once again, the collaboration that we have a longstanding legacy of, we need to keep to maintain those things, because there are some things that we wouldn't have been able to do if we didn't have that kind of collaboration.
Okay. So how do you plan to address the income gap that we have in Salina?
The increment gap? Well, at this point, the commission, the staff is recommending to us that, both because of salaries for the staff, and we need some pay adjustments there. We really aren't going to do a comprehensive pay plan review until next year, but we want to take care of our employees, so there's going to be a COLA involved. That's in the recommendation. And then we do have a big ticket item in an emergency preparedness system that we're going to have to work with the county to address. And both of those may require an adjustment to the mill levy, but we hope that it's going to be minimal. Nobody wants to raise the mill levy, but we got to have the emergency preparedness system, and we got to take care of our employees. But the other shortfalls, I believe, have been addressed in the budget.
Thank you. Housing is one of the main issues in the community today. How would you address issues with housing?
Well, I think we have been addressing the housing issues. I'm the kind of person that came into office feeling like all the tools in the toolbox ought to be applied. You know, anybody that was willing to take on a project, if we could help them, we should. So I was in favor of assessment financing for builders of traditional housing. We have advanced a loan to the folks that are going to redevelop the Lee buildings. That's going to fill a segment there of housing need. The Housing Authority itself is reconfiguring some of the 150, 60 homes they own, and they will be providing some of those to the market in the next year. So that should address housing need in the center there. And there are some commissioners that are interested in freeing up some land in Centennial Park that might, we'd hope, would lead to more dense housing in that area, that would be affordable housing. So where we can address it, we are trying to address it. You can't force people that own the property to do what they don't want to do with the property, and there's economic realities to redeveloping things. And so you're working with grant situations, you're working with refurbishing or redoing infrastructure. So that's a challenge to any of the builders. But I think over the last four years, we've made progress in that area, and we'll continue to work at it.
So the population has been declining in Salina. How would you reverse that trend?
Well, I don't accept that it's necessarily been declining, maybe slightly, but we are, I don't think we're talking about substantial numbers, and they're all estimates. So there are some out there that are making, I think, too much ado about a declining population base. But we've got to be realistic about that and realize that we've got to have the kind of community with the amenities and the sort of assets that people want to come to. So in that regard, we're talking about not only housing and not only parks, which I think are a very important attraction for people, because, you know, not only are they healthy for you, they raise property values, they stimulate economic development, and people, well, we have a new Parks Master Plan, and it will tell you that people want to engage with nature, and that's the most important aspect of parks to them. I know those that are interested in baseball and programming, tennis, they have the interest in the programming, but the larger part of the community is more interested in the aesthetics of the park. So I think that's an important tool going forward in promoting the city. So growth, we need it. It's essential. Whether we're drastically declining in any way, I don't think that's happening. We also have two new employers coming to town that, you know, we've established a new EDO for the community, and they are working, I think, very diligently, very hard to address employers' needs, both for workforce and for numbers of jobs and quality jobs. So you have to take your gains incrementally, and you have to be ready to look at the opportunities that come before you and act on them. So I say you need to keep investing in infrastructure. That's an important key, but not extend too far.
Okay. I would like to see a botanical garden, by the way, if we can possibly fit one in.
Those are my favorite things in the parks as well.
So how do you feel about the new downtown developments? I know that we discussed this in your introduction. How would that downtown development, do you think, stimulate growth in both attracting new industries or just bigger industries? And how will it affect the housing developments, maybe to the north of the city, do you think?
Well, I think it should all be positive. Downtown is, the first piece of that redevelopment was the fieldhouse itself, and that's just a driver of numbers downtown, and it's proving itself to be successful at that. And then the other key components of the downtown project are, you know, emphasize that. And certainly, if we have, the Lee Building will add in its first phase 53 housing units downtown, and I know that there's others that are interested in creating housing there. So just like there's statistics that say that a park near you raises your housing values, I think it'll have that same effect going north, even over the railroad tracks.
Okay. So every city, as you know, is pursuing economic development.
Oh, sure.
And yet many medium-sized communities, like ours, are facing multiple challenges. What's your vision, and how should Salina go about encouraging economic development?
Well, I think we're doing the right things with the EDO component. That organization is composed of county and city and airport authority elements and K-Polly. So they're an arm reaching out to tell Salina a story outside of our sphere here. The chamber is active in that regard as well. I think that important component is the educational side of things and that we can be a training area for people that come here to learn a trade, and hopefully we can retain them here. Housing is a component of that. I think we're trying to address that. I wish there were some place, some way we could approach daycare. Our schools are terrific, but I hear repeated that basically salaries for daycare people, there aren't enough places for people to put their children, and it's difficult to staff those kind of enterprises. So I don't know if that's an area that the City Commission gets involved in, but it's certainly a need if we're going to have a well-rounded offering to the communion, for community, for people to come here.
So Carl, we've been talking a lot about the budget challenges and the ways in which we can try and solve some of the problems with regard to the budget. Is there anything that you would like to do specifically that would solve those problems in the short term? And do you have any solutions that would solve those problems in the long term?
Well, that's we can sell the naming rights to something, again, like the TPEC. You know, otherwise, you're looking at the traditional funding sources of the budget. You've got your enterprise funds, your city businesses, and you can change fees. You've got sales taxes, you've got the mill levy. If we went to the voters to ask for an increase in the sales tax for some good reason, that's probably the most likely scenario. Our fees aren't high in comparison to other cities, but we do raise them a little bit each year. Two and 3% will be what's in the budget for this year. And, you know, that's just to avoid sticker shock. You don't want to wait 10 years and then raise the price. I'm afraid we're into that scenario with the Smoky Hill River Festival. They've held the price at the $10 level for 10 years. And in my way of looking at things, that's not the way to approach budgeting. You got to be incremental, where the shock upsets people. But in that case, I think it was a matter of managing cash money on the site, so they just kind of let it go a little too long, when we might have had a dollar increase here, a dollar increase there. So you've got revenues from the actual enterprises that you have, and you've got the mill levy, which everybody is a little sensitive about. I mean, we've raised the mill levy once since I've been a commissioner. It stayed the same twice, and it's gone down once. And I think what we're hearing from staff this coming time is we want to raise it a little bit to make up for the projection shortfalls. We really don't find all that out until the county gives us numbers, and then the staff does the projections, and that's still a month out or so. The sales tax, well, let me say this, Salina's not overtaxed. When we are compared to our peer communities, we're at the middle or lower on almost all forms of taxes, whether you want to talk about the sales tax or the mill levy itself or our school bonding or funding for their mill levy, the county. So for the package of amenities we provide the taxpayers, we're relatively modest. We're, I won't say anybody's undertaxed, everybody have a different opinion about that. But it's all very fair, and we provide the public with, you know, this is a wonderful city. We've got a lot more things than a lot of communities that our size have for the amount of taxes we charge. I'm really interested in the next term to see what we can do with the Master Parks Plan. This is something that was created over my last term, and we have a lot of good information in that about the value of parks and a format or a game plan for how to fund those improvements. I'd like to think we could be more aggressive about that. And where our sales tax sits in comparison to peer communities, we probably got a little margin in there. I would say that we could raise and still be below the 50%. You were in the pack, we're in the middle. We could take a small increase and do some wonderful things with our parks. Parks go to the culture and the amenities of the city. I think everybody wants the nature aspects of parks, and there's another really large component of the community that's interested in the programming side of that. And that would be a way that we could more aggressively address the quite a few million dollars that are in the Parks Master Park Plan.
In terms of raising funds or preventing services from being cut, does the city go out and actively ask private institutions to, you know, to pay for services or to pay for one-off amenities?
Yeah, I don't know that we, I'm not aware that we have ourselves generated an active campaign to ask for some specific services. There's a number of people out there that have initiatives, and they will come to the city to seek assistance with things. But I'm not aware that we have developed any kind of list of those things that we'd like to undertake.
And also, volunteerism is very, very strong in Europe. You know, we have a volunteer police force known as the Special Constabulary in Britain. We have...
We could save a lot of money if we had a volunteer police force.
Well, you know, this organization itself, Salina Media Connection, we've had to adapt because we've had some challenging budgets over the past few years. And volunteers have stepped up in order to keep the shows going and keep the lights on. Is that something that the city should become more active in? You know, coordinate volunteer services in order to make sure that all the services are provided within the city?
Whether or not that comes from the top-down and creating another organization within the city to develop volunteerism, I think every department does that in their own, the River Festival folks, you folks here at Salina Media Connection, whatever the efforts are. I mean, the fire department and the police both undertake their own volunteer kinds of activities. And to me, that system works fine. You don't have any shortage of people in Salina willing to volunteer for things. As the population ages, I mean, thinking of the River Festival, for example, when you have an enterprise that's that large and depends on that much volunteerism, it's probably getting a little more challenging over the years as the population ages. So I know that that is on every agency's mind. I would be open to a commission that wanted to discuss doing something in a broader, you know, community-wide type of effort.
We've also spoken about, you know, making changes to the income gap or, you know, how you would try and solve some of those problems. Specifically, what would you ask of private industries to do in order to reduce that income gap?
So you're saying that the city should ask companies that come here for money?
Well, I'm thinking that, you know, companies who operate within this town, and we have a wide variety of companies associated with manufacturing, healthcare, aviation. But those companies don't have a higher value, or some of those companies don't have a higher value activity such as research and development, new product development. What could you do as a city to try and encourage those companies to maybe bring some of those higher-paying activities to Salina?
Well, each of those companies has their own mission or plan, and if they've got some new area that they want to develop, I'm sure the city would listen to them and partner with them. But that's a very cautious kind of situation, because number one, we're not a very big community. It's very difficult to find prospects. We always look to the ones that are here to support them. But there's a part of me that bothers, I mean, I'll use the Vision One group that's going to come to Salina. They're bringing 450 jobs. They probably wouldn't have left where they were if their city had gotten behind them and supported their expansion, but they wanted their city to buy them a hangar and some of the facilities we already had here. So, you know, you can push too hard, and there's always the incentive, how much incentive are you going to give? And, you know, does it appear a tax to the corporate entities? So I think that's a delicate conversation that happens one prospect at a time.
I see, yeah, okay. In terms of the housing within Salina, how do you specifically intend to change the way that the housing is in this city? You know, you have areas where we have very, very expensive houses built on the Greenbelt, and then you have places, say in North Salina, where you have brownfield sites that need to be developed or should be developed in order to provide the intermediate housing. How would you propose going about revitalizing that area housing?
Yeah, I still think that that is a project of the people that own the brownfields. Most of the people that I know in North Salina, and I grew up here, they're not as negative about their neighborhood. I mean, they like where they're living and enjoy living there. There might be a problem that it's homeownership is a little spotty, and there's quite a number of rentals, and maybe the rentals don't get taken care of. But I don't think that they have a complex about being from North Salina. All of the traditional development is happening in a very normal pattern. Comprehensive plan shows the areas of change and the areas of growth, and it's happening in a very logical, systematic way. The one challenge or challenges that we'll have is when you have a big employer like Vision One come in, and you don't have available housing for their employees, what's going to happen? They're going to go out in the county and build something out there. And we want to have that inventory available when that type of housing is needed. And at this point, there isn't enough buildable stock in the traditional housing. We've got gaps in the middle, and we've got gaps at the low end, and we've got a gap at the top, too. So I believe the commission has been supportive of everything that can be. They've allowed special assessment financing when it's been brought to the commission, and they've supported what they can in the middle, and I think we'll continue to support any good ideas that help with the redevelopment side of it.
Okay. Well, I think that we've asked a large number of questions to do with the city of Well, I think that we've asked a large number of questions to do with the city of Salina. What I'd like to do now is to give you the opportunity in order to look into the camera, look at the viewers of this program, address the electorate and explain to them why they should vote for you in the upcoming elections.
Well, I, first, thank you for allowing me to be a commissioner my first term. And yes, I am interested in being a commissioner for another term. And I hope that the folks will see that I'm a reasonable and I'm the kind of person that wants everybody to come to the table and want to hear all of the options that are there. As I say, I think the key issue is to look at Salina as something we need to grow and build all of the issues around that, that it takes to make this place a desirable place to come and live. So I'm interested in the parks. I'm interested in housing. I'm interested in our educational components, our colleges and the quality of education that we can offer. And I, you know, I'm not a guy that's real good at tooting my horn, but I hope that they'll agree that I play nice in the sandbox on the city commission. One of the things I'd hoped to help change when I came on the commission was that I was somebody that was willing to collaborate, that I wanted to hear other people's ideas and that I'm more interested in getting things done than whining about things. I don't think negativism is going to get us anywhere. We've got to do, use our resources wisely and move the things that we can ahead when we have the opportunity, so.
Thank you very much, Carl.
Okay, Dr. Mark.
Good.
Nice to meet you.
And you too, yeah. A pleasure.